All right, we are going to call the meeting to order. We do have one addition, which is the Port Hoxbury Literacy Council event, but we don't have that. I would ask if there are any other additions to the agenda this evening. I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda with the one addition.
So moved.
In case we have a second. Also, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved with the one addition. We have the benefit of having two presentations this evening. First up is Inverness County Asylum Commemoration Project, and we have Keith McDonald, who is the C A O of Inverness County Council, here to do the presentation. So the floor is yours, Keith. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Greatly appreciate the opportunity to present today. We're going to go over a bit of, well, a significantly, significant historic. I forget how to say that. Anyway, it's very significantly in part of the history of Inverness County. Also, the research that we've been able to put together through an individual named Stanley Beadman from the Mabou area, that's been very dedicated to doing research around the Inverness County asylum. The presentation today, I'll be using potentially some language that maybe affect people, particularly at the beginning. I'll be using language that used to be very common in the eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds. But I'm going to really focus on the individuals that were in these facilities in Inverness County as residents instead of patients and/or other type of language that's used in earlier part of the presentation. Because we're not fully, we don't have all of the proper picture as to why many of these people were in these facilities, be it from mental challenges or health challenges in general, or sometimes there's just no documentation as to why this any individual was there. So we're just going to really focus on utilizing resident for the presentation. Because that's where they live. For some people for a greater duration. So what we're hoping to do is commemorate this piece of history in Inverness County, these asylum, and we have some historical context around that. It goes way back to seventeen fifty-four, where the first courthouse in Halifax opens. And that's again, some of the language that is used. And this was recognized for people that were considered poor and/or had other challenges. Then we fast forward to eighteen fifty-six, where the Mount Old Asylum for Insane opens. And that was a significant facility and a departure from what was in the mid seventeen hundreds. So almost a hundred years later, but again, the same type of facility, large, usually overcrowded facility. Move on to eighteen seventy-four, eighteen seventy-eight. And there's more institutions proposed by Mount Old Superintendent Dr. Reed, because this facility that was in Halifax was certainly non-sufficient in terms of his findings and that there should be more services provided in this realm. So we move quickly to eighteen eighty-six, where the Act Respecting Goals Municipal Unit Asylums and Courthouses was put together. And that kicked off a series of new developments and new facilities, in particular in Inverness County. In eighteen ninety, the first Inverness County asylum opens near Mabou, with a space for, at the time, they called people that stay in there inmates. And there's thirty-two of those individuals. But we move forward to eighteen ninety-three, and that's when neighboring municipalities signed agreements to send patients to the Inverness County asylum. And the facility's population soon surpassed a hundred residents, and additional spaces are added to the facility. But as those new residents came in, it raised significant issues. And there was a report, and we have a quote here from a inspection report from nineteen seventeen. "The Inverness County asylum is one of the largest of the county's institutions, accommodating nearly one hundred patients. These people are housed in a cheerless ramshackle old fire trap, which is poorly equipped and in bad repair, and which is altogether unsuited for asylum purposes." So upon that report and the deteriorating conditions in this overcrowded facility, it was necessary, it spurred the development and construction of a new facility on the site. So in nineteen twenty-four, a larger new facility was built on the same site in nineteen twenty-four. But unfortunately, it was destroyed by fire in February nineteen forty-seven. And then that fire, two residents, Susan Berkeley, age forty-three, and Hannah Timmons, age forty-five, died in that fire. And there are the last two people buried in an adjacent plot of land that was the asylum cemetery. And both of these individuals, our historian has found through their research, both of these individuals were in a work area, but were locked in the work area and weren't able to escape the fire. So going back through all those records from eighteen ninety to nineteen forty-seven, there were at least four hundred and fifty residents that died in the fifty-seven years of the facility while it operated, including as many as thirty-one just in nineteen sixteen. Those who were not collected by family, with them being buried in an unmarked grave that was, as I mentioned, beside the site. After the fire, it was decided that there would not be an asylum rebuilt, and the property was sold by auction by the county. And it's been an active firm ever since. But the portion where the cemetery was, was still in municipal property. So as I mentioned, local historian Stanley Beadman has been doing research on the asylum cemetery for quite some time. And he then approached the county to talk about how do we commemorate the site? And since then, municipality's been working and looking, particularly over the last number of years, on how we can properly commemorate the site. So in the fifty-seven years of the Inverness County asylum, as I mentioned, four hundred and forty-seven recorded deaths. There's an estimated one hundred and ten unmarked graves on the site. Of these, eighty-eight names have been identified, including forty from Inverness County, twenty-two from Victoria County, sixteen from Richmond County, six from outside of Cape Ratman, three from the Seaboard, and one from Port Hoxbury. But there's a number of names out of the one hundred and ten that have not been identified. But here's the location along Highway Route nineteen, just south of Mabou. It would be at the intersection of Route nineteen and the West Mabou Road, the former asylums on that farm area. And then there's the unmarked cemetery in the yellow little plot there that the arrow is pointing to. So the projects itself that we've put together is to look at commemoration of the former Inverness County asylum and the cemetery for the people that lived and were buried there. We're looking at a multi-year initiative, and we're leading that. We hope to collaborate with our neighboring municipalities, families, historians, the province, and other disability advocates. So it's really going to be focused on the acknowledgement, education, and creating lasting public memorials to restore dignity, preserve memory, and ensure long-term stewardship of the site. We have several truths that we want to focus on, seven here in particular. It's a real comprehensive approach, not just about remembering, but ensuring the lasting change moving forward. It's in your presentation. I'm not going to go through them all in detail, but obviously, we're going to touch on all of these seven themes that's been made for the project. And it ties into the provincial remedy. As some of you may know, the North Dakota Community Memorialist Remedy, the remedy has been now being advanced in its legally binding plan and systematic determination and institutionalization. So the focus is closing institutions and expanding community supports and individualized planning. So how that tied in, obviously, we want to make sure, because this was an institution, that we have a visible reminder of this model. And this is part of the remedy. And it's now continuing to try to see the end of this type of model. A commemoration offers public acknowledgement and memorial justice to the activities that happened there and hopefully continue reform. And together, reform and remembrance will form a full response to the historic and ongoing injustice. So we're going to also reach back up to the province once we've talked to our neighboring municipalities. This is the third we've already presented earlier this week to Victoria County, and we're in Richmond County last week. So we'll be asking the province for some support as we move this project forward. So the proposed timeline, fall-winter, draft some public statements and finalize the project, and then develop an engagement plan, winter. And then to the spring, we'll design the memorials. Then look at concavions around that, summer. Maybe into the fall, we would look at unveiling cemetery ceremony and then onward continued remembrance and long-term stewardship of the site. So the proposed budget is a hundred and forty thousand, of which a good chunk is in kind through staff participation and then some yearly maintenance as well. So we're reaching out to each one of our partners to sign a request for the provincial support, so we can go at that together. Look at passing a formal resolution acknowledging that the asylum's history and our municipal roles in that, and deliver a joint statement at some point in time, most likely when we have the ceremony, talking about the responsibility of that facility. And then each municipal unit participate through a contribution of one dollar per current resident in the municipal unit. And I should delete this next bullet in terms of ongoing remembrance, just to raise that, but not reaching out and asking for the ongoing maintenance. We would look after that as municipal unit in Inverness County. And then we would have a designated staff lead to join our project team to develop the look, the the space itself and anything we construct to outline its history, be that signage or monument type of thing. So here's the breakdown. We're looking at each of the municipal units. With the Tampa Port Hoxbury, the ask would be a one-time contribution in your next year's budget of three thousand two hundred dollars. So the next steps again would be just to sign the joint request of provincial support, pass a resolution to acknowledge the role in the Inverness County asylum, designate a staff person to join a project team to move it forward in a collective manner, and then approve funding as part of the next year's budget. So thank you for your time. Hopefully, I didn't run over the ten minutes. I was concentrating on rushing, and I may have missed a few points. I'm two minutes over. Oh.
That is, that's okay.
But thank you for your time today. And please answer any questions, provide any suggestions.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. I'm going to open up the floor, and you will start with Deputy Deputy Mayor Ian Langley.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yours for me. I first became aware of this institution in a letter dated July third from the Warden of Inverness County, addressed to you. It was in our package for our September, for our September meeting. That's when I first became aware of this institution. And we learned a lot from you this evening. Before any questions or anything, you know, we learned of people who died in overcrowded conditions, inadequate conditions, many in unmarked graves. Before any discussion, I think it'd be appropriate if we had a time of quiet reflection, perhaps a moment of silence could be observed for those who have lived and died in those conditions.
Certainly, I think that that's definitely appropriate. That's what I understand. Thank you, everyone. Would you like to get seen? If you have any questions.
This institution, above to mind, it's appalling. And it's fascinating. We've read and we've heard that under provincial statutes in says here in a letter in nineteen eighty-nine, that they were assigned care for these people. That's eighteen eighty-nine, in January twenty-second of that year was the year Port Hoxbury was incorporated. And that's fascinating, because that's one of our first intermunicipal type of agreements, or we sent people in there when they were under your care. It's following the level of care, the dignity of those who were in the unmarked graves. And I'm very glad to see that this project is underway to do better. I noticed, I made note here, in nineteen forty-seven was the fire. There, you had mentioned a lady, Miss Timmons, at age forty-five. I'm not great at math, but in nineteen forty-five, if she was in forty-seven, if she was forty-five, she could have had a ten-year-old. Come up to twenty-twenty-five, if you were ten years old and forty-five, you'd be eighty-eight years old. It's within the realm of possibility that there's living descendants today of the immediate relatives possible. So I think there's a sense of urgency. There should be a sense of urgency, and I'm glad to see that this project's underway to best.
Stanley has identified a number of descendants from many of the residents.
Yeah.
But it's the historical documents around each residence is not robust, obviously, and some are missing, but he's done a very thorough investigation with what's available.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Your Worship, if council colleagues, you know, I have thoughts for a motion. I ask that a motion be considered at the November Public Council meeting after proper deliberation to support the Inverness County Asylum Commemoration Project. And I also ask that in the interim during that time of that, considering the many partnerships and associations and joint ventures that we share with the municipality of County of Inverness, and there are many. We're sharing all kinds of things to do, not limited, but intermunicipal agreements on sewage treatment, Eastern District Planning Commission, Police Service Commission, Fire Service Mutual Aid, E M O, the Eastern Counties Regional Library, Cape Ratman Regional Network, Cape Ratman Partnership, the Allen J McCacken Regional Airport Advisory Committee, Straight Area Chiefs, Mayor, and Wardens. Contributions to various facilities, not limited to the pool, I T services, financial software, diamond group. There's all kinds, and that cooperation is important, because we can't afford to do all our resources as individual silos. We need to work together, Kate Brennan, and that's important. But I digress a little bit. I'd like the council to further consider that we request the staff for both municipalities to review these joint ventures that I just mentioned and others with respect to a clearer organizational structure, terms of reference, agreements in place, and general compliance and appropriate participation in doing so to identify areas for improvement, to help celebrate our successes, and to inform council of the findings from the review. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So McCory?
Thank you, Your Worship, Keith, very much. Appreciate the presentation. And as Deputy Mayor has indicated, you know, I really personally wasn't terribly familiar with the whole history here. And I think it's a very worthwhile initiative that the municipality has undertaken, has undertaken. And I for one certainly, and I would echo and share and the Deputy Mayor's some interest in what, make it known that we want to contribute and be a part of the project. Thank you.
Counselor Barrett?
Yeah, thank you, Keith. Yeah, it's amazing what, you know, what was acceptable back then is not acceptable in society today. And it's just, you know, having that commemoration, you know, having that acknowledgement to, you know, act as a reminder for us. So yeah, just totally.
Counselor Hart. Thanks, Keith, for presenting. Pardon me, it was very interesting. And I must say, I didn't know a whole lot about the details. A little bit disturbing. I just, you know, out of four hundred and fifty-seven people in fifty-seven years, it's like eight persons yearly dying in the facility. So it was very sad. And like I said, we might have some existing families still living with, but they may be able to come to some peace with this. But I am, I am in full support and look forward to moving forward with meetings and. So what else? Thank you, Keith, for your presentation. And we will certainly bring it forward to our next public meeting. And of course, it's, I understand it's part of the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven budget, budget considerations. So we will definitely move that forward. And also, I think it's, I think there's a lot of merit in looking at all the things that we're doing together. And, you know, that is critically important. You know, and we all share responsibility, obviously, in this, in this chapter of history and how to move forward and do better. You have to know better to be able to do better, so.
One of the counselors at Richmond County, you know, some of the language can be taken that the workers that went there every day, maybe part of the issue. But obviously, that's, it was the facility we're talking about and the overcrowding. And there was a lot of wonderful people that did work there and did their best to provide good care. I make a grand aunt myself that worked at the facility. So I don't want anyone that might be listening feeling that to disparage any of the workers. It's, it's more around the facility and the model and how even now we're moving away from that with the brand.
No, that's great. We appreciate your time. Our next presenter this evening is the Port Hoxbury Waterfront Destination Development Phase One Project. I believe that Mr. Bert Lewis, who is also the Commodore of the Strait of Cancel Yoplait, is here as the key presenter, but he may have backup assistance.
Yes, Your Worship, thank you very much.
Sure is.
It's great to be here, counsel, attending meetings, seeing the great work that you're doing. Really enjoying Keith's presentation. So see that guy's stuff coming to light now. Nobody else will be responding to that. I have with me tonight Sandy McDonald from Port Hoxbury Marina, here to give us as Commodore and Vice Commodore. Adam Langley, a consultant for Super Yachts East Coast and Miami Consulting. And he'll be giving a brief on the proposal. I just want to introduce it by saying I moved here twenty-five years ago with the North Dakota Community College, and I retired about fifteen years ago. I can't believe this. And when I originally moved here, I thought, you know, when I'm ready to retire, I'll go back where I came from or I'll go somewhere else. But we like it here. We really love this community. And we get to look out at the harbor and the Strait of Cancel every day, for my hopes. And so you're stuck with me.
Happily.
But, and we spoke to you before about the Marine, the Marine owned by the town. And we operated on lease. And it's, I just like to tell people, it's about fifteen years beyond its best before date. So it's requiring a lot of maintenance and upkeep that we've been doing over time and keeping it going. A lot of this is really a lot of boats coming and going. But our original, or the first time I spoke to you about this, was just talking about the Marine itself. And we come to realize after a couple of years of kicking that one around that it's a call that's not interested in something that there we focus. So that caused us to look at a couple of the studies that were done in the recent past for the town. Acoustics had a study there from two thousand and four. We had a look at that. We had a look at the Badham Study from twenty twenty. And the two of them highlighted the same features, the natural asset we have in the town. They were blessed with the harbor, with the Strait of Cancel. And that, that connect, that body of water connects us to the world, and it connects the world to us. And as much of the fabric we get now, I think there's a much bigger prize to be had. And if we develop the waterfront for our people, for residents, whether it be something for the children, for seniors, for boaters, whatever, I think it could be a real boost for the recreation of the town and a real economic driver. So we want to explore all of those development opportunities. And we're originally thinking that we've got a new operator down there now in the ship repair business, Cactus Marine. They're interested in expanding their operation. We're interested in doing something. The Superport, Strait of Cancel Superport Corp., are the owners and operators of the Port Hoxbury Wharf. They're interested in listening to what we have to say. And if there's more development that they can be involved with, they'll be there. So with that, I'll introduce Adam Langley. And Adam is a Bedet resident and somebody, what made you know him already? So I'll turn it over to Adam.
Bedet resident for three months. Thanks, Bert. So I believe you guys have a copy of the brief that we provided to the Yoplait. I'm just going to provide some more context to that. Again, my name's Adam Langley. I'm a new resident of Cape Ratman Islands. Recently moved to Bedet from Halifax after spending thirty years in the city. And he's settling into Bedet, where I've spent most of my summers anyway, growing up on the water. So for me, though, to be here in Port Hoxbury is rather special as well. It's a bit of a homecoming for me. Port Hoxbury is my family's ancestral home. A place where generations of my family worked on the waterfront as shipbuilders and shipyard operators, lockmasters, divers. So to be here is nice for me. It's sort of, I'm a waterfront builder, it's kind of like coming full circle. So again, thanks for having me, and thanks for inviting me in the opportunity of discussing further your project. I'd like to begin with a little bit of rhetorical question for the room. What does Halifax, Lunenburg, Bedet, Pepto, Port Hoxbury, what do these waterfronts have in common? Well, historically, these were all thriving, working waterfronts, places where our economy was driven by not trucks on the highways, but ships on the sea. There were communities built around trade, shipbuilding, and the movement of goods and people where prosperity began at the water's edge. Over time, as industry evolved and our economy shifted inland, many of these waterfronts fell void. In some cases, they became underutilized spaces and in times that even became a strain on local resources. But in recent years, we've witnessed a remarkable resurgence of our waterfronts. Many of these same places have redefined the relationship with the water, transforming once industrial waterfronts into vibrant destinations that now attract residents, visitors, and investment alike. This transformation has been achieved through thoughtful planning, collaboration, and recognition that our water fronts are among our most valuable assets. Not only economically, but socially and culturally. Through my past work with the province of Nova Scotia, I spent over a decade working for Waterfront Development, which became Develop Nova Scotia, which became Build Nova Scotia at this point. And now is my time as an independent consultant. I've been fortunate to help shape success stories across the water fronts of Halifax, Lunenburg, and Bedak, to name a few. In each case, the formula for success has been consistent. Build strong partnerships, invest in sustainable and appropriately sized infrastructure, and connect local opportunity to broader provincial, regional, regional and global networks. Adding Fort Hoxbury to this developing provincial network of infrastructure, service, and people is an exciting project. That is why I'm here this evening at the Innovation Strait of Cancel Yacht Club to support their effort to initiate a project brief that will lay the foundation for an actual destination development plan for the Port Hoxbury waterfront. Let me say that again, an actual plan. We don't build plans to sit on shelves. Their vision is not just about improving infrastructure, services, services and facilities, as Bert spoke to. It's about building momentum toward a broader transformation that positions Port Hoxbury as part of a growing provincial network of connected, sustainable waterfront destinations. Across Nova Scotia, communities are aligned under emerging initiatives like Booty Nova Scotia, led by Destination Cape Breton, and others, projects we're involved in, which seek to showcase our coastlines as world-class marine destinations. The Strait of Cancel Yacht Club fits squarely within this vision. And Port Hoxbury has the assets, the location, and the leadership to play a central role. Our early work will focus on phased activities and actions that will elevate the infrastructure, service, and overall experience at the yacht club while strengthening its connection to the broader waterfront and community. The goal is to increase local participation and visitor engagement with the waterfront as a shared community asset. And in doing so, to build the awareness and support necessary to advance recommendations that will emerge from the project brief. We'll identify key strengths, challenges, and opportunities, and prepare a high-level concept and proliferately costing for the proposed improvements. The project brief will also demonstrate how this initiative aligns with municipal, provincial, and federal priorities in tourism, infrastructure, and sustainability. Ensuring it's well positioned to attract funding and strategic partners. Importantly, this first phase will deliver a concise, well-structured document, easy to share, present, and digest, that gives the yacht club, town, and partners a clear story to tell and the tools needed to begin rallying support required from the waterfront development opportunities forward. Ultimately, our collective work will provide a roadmap to guide the next phase of development, advancing community needs, economic opportunity, and provide a place along the Strait of Cancel. I was told it in a lot of times, so thank you for yours. I think the most important thing to take away from the presentation tonight is that there have been plans and studies done in the past by tremendous firms who have presented great products. But there's not been a starting point. I feel that we feel the starting point for the waterfront is infrastructure that already exists that needs to be improved. The yacht club facility and surrounding area, the Superport Wharf. This existing infrastructure that's be elevated and improved with phased investment to help grow the waterfront. And I'll use the example of Bedak. Several years ago, I was involved in helping kind of the research of the Bedak waterfront. And the first asset we identified for investment was the wharf. It's what the community collected from both land and sea. And so that initial investment was made. It was proven to be, proved a return on investment in gathering birthing fees from the visiting business by water to improve the upland businesses. So it demonstrated ROI, which went to the next investment, which was on Kinston Island, which was a wharf to have better public access for the lines of swimming program and trails on the island. That through successful. So the next project was the boardwalk, which is now under construction. A three million dollar project. This only happened in the last seven years in a small community in Bedak. But Bedak is connected to Port Hoxbury. Port Hoxbury is connected to Picto. Picto's Halifax, Lunenburg. We're all a marine ecosystem. If we work collaboratively together, we can be the rising tide that floats all boats. So thank you for your time. Apologize next time we're back with a really flashy presentation. I still have a few minutes to speak.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, Brad, you can certainly entertain. We don't have the flashy presentation unless it gives the opportunity to use slides. And it's like, oh, they have the brief and we'll go with that. I did offer to bring my guitar and thought it would be all that for a different occasion.
Drop your anchor.
Yeah. So we next we have Sandy McDonald. If there's no questions on the proposal, Sandy will close with her ask.
May I ask the first officers, thank you very much for your time. I have a lot of really talented speakers here. I don't know if I can do as well. The, I want to start with the fact that the town of Fort Hoxbury has a huge opportunity. The waterfront in Fort Hoxbury is the envy of every landlot, town, and village in this country's country. We have the waterfront, so we have an opportunity to build on it. The other type of operators there, the infrastructure is all over the town. We as operators, we see on a daily basis the walkers that come in to socialize and talk. We see the people who pull out their car to have their coffee or lunch over and over again. We see people on boats that come from Quebec, Ontario, United States, Europe. And they compliment us on the hatred and hospitality. They like this town. They tell people about it and they have other people coming back to the waterfront in Fort Hoxbury. Like just this weekend, yesterday, we had a boat traveling from Ontario, going to Caribbean. And the place they stopped for provisions before they headed there was Port Hoxbury. This is a gateway destination. Is this development that we're talking about, which was referred to by Adam, it requires funding. And the funding, we hope, will come from all levels of government. And we hope that we'll get industrial sponsors and maybe other heritage sponsors. We're looking for all opportunities that will get that funding. To get that funding, we need something in our hands that we can say, here's the plan. Here's the first step. This is the starting point for where to go with. I think Adam, and Adam's the right guy, he has the right company, right experience, and it's the right time to do this. So you all, most of you are all there. We've been involved in these discussions going back five or six years, and we've received tremendous support from encouragement from the past Deputy Mayor and past councillors and present councillors. Everybody ready to swing that back and get this thing going. So we are now, we're looking for financial support for this study. It's maybe is a fifteen thousand dollars study. And the infrastructure and all of the land down there is owned by the town. We as operators of the yacht club, operators of the Marine, want to form a partnership with the town on this proposal. We're going to be feet on the ground. We want this document in our hand. We're looking for the, we're looking for support from the town in order to study. We feel that the town was buying seventy-five percent of the cost. And we as the yacht club, we're going to benefit also. There's no doubt about that. So we would put on the additional twenty-five percent. Yes, that's our ask.
Thank you.
So I thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
No, absolutely. First and foremost, thank you to all of the presenters here today. We'll open up the floor for any questions or comments, and we'll start with Counselor Hurd. That's okay. Okay, I'm just gonna. That's okay. Get my numbers right here. Which doesn't really matter at the time, I guess. So I just want to be a little more accurate. No, that's okay, counselor. So first of all, thank you very much for coming as Chair of the Community Development. I'm really pleased to bring this forward to council. And Adam, on the short notice for you coming this evening, I really appreciate that. And it was a great presentation. I just want to digest it all and feed off the nourishment of what can happen with the waterfront. I have made many trips this summer, and they have engaged me to go to the water fronts of Charlottetown. I've in PEI went to many, and I don't know what my interest is all of a sudden, but it's the passion for our waterfront. And we have, everyone talks about our deepest seaport, ice-free. Like, we need to strategize and bring something to light and support what we have in our strait area. We've been talking about it for years. I go to these other communities. I did take a drive to Bedak to see the construction there. I went right down to visually see it. I've been drawn to Picto. I just seem to be going to these communities that that really want to make me bring this to light and, or us as a council and to support it. So if I may, I don't know if it's the time through you, Your Worship, to bring the motion for consideration to support after an in-detail discussion on the possibilities related to phase one of this waterfront destination development to council on our next meeting. So. Thank you. But thank you, guys. It was great. Thanks for coming forward. Counselor Barrett?
Yes, thank you. You know, it's, as Chair of the growth at Oxbury, you know, we want to see growth and development in the town. And totally, the waterfront is totally underutilized. We all recognize that. And there has been studies in the past, why, and kind of putting me on the spot, but just why hasn't that gained traction? You know, having development down there. Do we know?
Okay, can I speak to it? Well, I think the way of studying things in the past is not cut up to the reality of how to do things now. If that makes a bit of sense. And a lot of time, every project is a request of feasibility study. And if you don't really know what you're physically trying to do, how do you study it? So I think that the plans that we develop are immediately actionable. And they're based and rooted in practical approaches to really clean up what you already have and building on what's already there without trying to embed something new in something you're not. And the water fronts that were mentioned previously, Picto, Charlottetown, others, they're really, the energy you're getting there is from the local people that are being engaged in that destination that then attracts all the visitors. So I think with respect to Port Hoxbury, and I've been involved with this discussion for years, stayed back in my time with the province. I think we're just for trying to bite off, you need to bite off smaller chunks. And you start with smaller pieces and grow them. That's how the Halifax waterfront was developed over the fifteen years that I was on the property. Is we just kept doing little things that became a big experience. And that's how we approached this project.
A follow-up? Well done. Counselor McCory?
Thank you, Your Worship. Really appreciate the presentation. As most of you would know, waterfront development started at Port Hoxbury way back in nineteen ninety-one, ninety-two is when the first development society was put in place. And then over a period of years, there was much improvement made on that. So from taking out the old ferry workings and putting in the hammerstone for the boardwalk. And yeah, good one. And you're familiar with it. So we've had studies. And one of the positive studies that we had saw the implementation of the development of the Creamery as an entertainment facility in the waterfront. That was a really successful project. What I hear, we've done as campus council and previous council, have done a lot, considerable amount, to make more infrastructure improvements on the waterfront. We've upgraded the boardwalk. We've upgraded the water street. That's all been repaved. We have new lighting down on the waterfront now. So those are physical infrastructure things that have been improved. But there's still the idea about, okay, how do we make it vibrant? What do we do on the waterfront? So we have these pieces, but what can we do to make it a destination for people to come to? And what I'm hearing from what you're presenting and what we've discussed about is that's basically the gist of this proposal, I think. And so for that, I'm pleased. For me, in my opinion, I'm certainly supportive of the system and the town's system. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Deputy Mayor?
Yep. As you're aware, I threw you to perhaps the comrade. Someone mentioned in the presentation, looking at all opportunities. And I heard you mention a firm that's now operating in the least municipal land at the southern end of the boardwalk. We're happy to have it there. And glad to hear that you're connecting with them, because I think they could be a good neighbor of yours. There's another neighbor just to the north at the former, in the Ocean Innovation Center. I gotta call it that now, right?
That's correct.
Headquartered in Copenhagen, Denmark. And I think you could be some relationship building there, which I'm sure you're fostering already. And is that correct?
Yes, we have a, we have to replace the mooring chains or docks. And we're gifted to some very heavy mooring chains from Spencer.
Wonderful. They're also tentative, and we're happy to have them too. So I'm happy to hear that. I noticed, being a bit of a wharf rat, someone hanging around there, that there was, and you're looking at all opportunities. And I just wondered if you could tell me, I noticed a workboat operating in there during coring operations. There was tidal alongside your seawall. Are you collecting wharves from that when she operated there during the coring operation?
Was that the, we, he was putting his boat overnight in our, one of our slips.
Is that a revenue source for your?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, it is. That's good.
And there's a company, a company from Sydney comes in with a little open boat. Terrible Hydraulic of Sydney, they do machine shop plate work and iron working. And they were working on the coal terminal over in the North Coast Power Plant. And they're back and forth all the time, boat there. We get the same revenue from them as we get from other boats.
Wonderful.
And now today, Connor's diving are down. I don't know if they're working down at the quarry or where they're, whatever. They're down at the dock, they're using the facility.
Okay, excellent.
And just in terms of that, we have another diving company that's, and you all know, land diving there. We have Department of Fisheries and Oceans as a corporate member. The RCMP, Coast Guard, Environmental Response Systems was there. So there's a lot in, I don't know, the Inocence Community, I'm not convinced to be there all the time. They're a corporate member. St. Francis Xavier University, for the last ten years, had been doing a project there. Their biosign slide comes down, and they coat, put bottom anti-cowling test coats on, dip it in the water, leave it there, come back a month later, pull it in, take it back to the lab and analyze. And they're doing this in conjunction with a large international paint company to determine what science would have the best body coating. So there's a whole lot of different places that we are involved and bring into the government and the community. But the travel that I've been doing the last since I retired, particularly around the world of different parts of the state of New York, South America, Pacific, Atlantic, Caribbean. Like, I see so many opportunities and so glad that Adam is involved in this, because he sees the opportunities as well. Only the difference is he can pick up the farm coffee guys in the big yachts and raise them, bringing them into our place. That's the potential that we have to.
Two good questions.
No, good.
So you didn't get revenue for birchage from the firm that was operating during the coring? At the quarry last week, I understand that's a yes, Andy? You did charge birchage?
Oh, yes.
Okay, good. And what would, where I would probably gain a lot of support for this is knowing that this is not something that's not just for yacht club members, that this is something is for all community members benefit. Is that the ambition in here?
Yes, one hundred percent.
Okay, that's important. With that.
It's creating access to and from the water for everyone. Visitors, so businesses.
Yep. Is it not a yacht club members get? It's a something for the whole community to benefit from?
Sure.
That's important. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilor Hurd, that's another follow up.
Yep, that's true, your worship. And just to add that, we did go through the community development and we did mention all the like Fitzher and Cactus, Atlantic Subsea, Coast Guard, R C M P, uh Department of Fisheries. They were all mentioned as supporters that will contact them eventually for support. Um, I just had a, and it might be out of text, Adam, just anticipated priorities and timelines. And just potential finding and sources or partnerships to support the development after phase two, after phase one, what, how does that work?
Respect, find more partners?
Uh, partnerships and fundings, like to make, to bring this into fruition and and after phase two, if we went through with our study, like what what brings it to light after?
I just wanted to preface, it's a, not a study, uh, just because that word seems really cumbersome to me. Um, so yeah, what we're doing is creating a project brief that will put into context what's been done to get to the point where we are now, the yacht club moving forward. It's an ambition to kind of lead the kind of first development of the waterfront. Um, so all of this brief would come recommendations to connect with other funding partners, either the private sector or government or other programs um that could be pursued by the town or the Port of the Yacht Club depending on criteria, et cetera. Uh, so yeah, that would be part of the recommendation that would go to this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, any other questions from Council or comments? Um, just, I guess, while we have you here, um ideally, uh should the town move forward in partnership uh with the Marina. Um, you know, we could most certainly look for potential funding opportunities to help to help fund the the brief and and future, I guess, phased plan of, you know, what what can be action down the waterfront. Um, and a few things just kinda come to mind in terms of what those opportunities look like. Um, Cape Breton Island is on the global stage as a tourism destination. I mean, why wouldn't we wanna ride that wave? Uh, we only have so many ways to welcome people onto the island by land, air, and sea. We have the L N J Airport in close proximity and we have the the Strait of Cancelle, which to to the Commodore's point, no, it's it's definitely a gateway location that we can build upon. And imagine if we can welcome even more visitors uh by sea to the town of Port Hoxbury. I mean, that is a huge opportunity. And also when you take into account the fact uh of the strong history that we've had as a working waterfront and and we definitely see, you know, future chapters of that continuing, so how do you kind of? What does that coexistence look like as we're developing uh more of a destination at at the the Port Hoxbury waterfront zone? You know, I just, I see this as a huge, it's a huge undertaking, but also it has like huge potential. Um, not only for the town, but for surrounding communities as well and and um lots of potential partnerships that we that that we can secure going forward, so um, I guess we we do have to start somewhere. Uh, the comment, I guess, one other kinda question that I that I have is um in terms of the the briefing and the planning uh phase. Uh, we do have a uh five-year waterfront development plan that that the town has has developed and, you know, that we've um and I think Blaine has mentioned that, you know, we have gone through um some action uh pieces in terms of uh our former waterfront development committee and and that kinda approach has been carried forward by the our new community development committee in terms of what what is next. You hear is part and parcel of of those goals that have been set uh for, you know, we do have a councils that's very, very motivated on um to develop our waterfront, because we do see that as a critical opportunity. The, I I don't think I'm speaking out of turn when I say we all appreciate uh the presentation and we will definitely take it forward to our next public meeting um and look at ways that we can be successful in in bringing this forward. So thank you so much. Appreciate you all taking the time.
And you for both things. Bring back fond memories sitting around.
It's funny that Bert didn't introduce himself as a recovering politician, because that's usually one of his catchphrases. Take care. Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, so we'll move on now uh to council reports on the signed committees. So perhaps we'll start with Councilor Barrett.
Uh, September eighteenth, met with the town at Eastern Day District Planning Commission, uh discuss uh unsightly premises policy. Uh, September twenty-third, met with some development officers from Potlatch to discuss some opportunities on development. September twenty-fifth, met with representatives from Akola. Uh, October first, chaired the Grove at Hoxbury Committee Meeting. October the second, attended a virtual meeting uh for Cape Breton South Recruiting for Healthcare. October the third, attended Emergency Council Meeting. October the fourth, attended the Royal Canadian Air Cadet Flag Raising. October the eighth, attended NSFM Lunch and Learn with Nova Scotia Power Renewable Energy and Path to Twenty Thirty. October the fifteenth, met with a developer. October the sixteenth, met with the the board with the At Home Housing Association. Uh, October the eighteenth, uh met with Gina McDonald's uh from Cape Breton South Recruiting for Healthcare with the the M P, uh, Hani Batisk. Uh, October the eighteenth, attended the Austin Letcher Memorial Event.
Thank you very much. That's the Barrett. Um, Councilor Hurd, do you go next?
Sure. Um, September seventeenth, the railway crossing Look, Listen, Live, joined with railway representatives recognizing the road deckel. Uh, September nineteenth, member of community development, met with the yacht club, as a member of the community development, met with the yacht club members to bring this evening's presentation to light. Uh, September twenty-second, met with uh town staff with a potential station house occupant. September twenty-fifth, E D P C Eastern District Planning Commission Meeting, um October one, chaired community development. October third, uh was an emergency meeting. October four, Royal Canadian Air Cadet Flag Raising. October seventh, uh public council meeting. October eight, met with town staff for potential vendor for kiosk on the waterfront. October tenth, opening of Amazing Celtic Colors, which our staff has to be commended for their uh presentation on that. And October eighteenth was Austin Letcher Memorial on Saturday morning.
Thank you so much, Councilor. Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I'll just quickly, quickly, uh, I've written to the, was it? Uh, September seventeenth, McSwen Street Railway Crossing, had a brief discussion on uh rail commodity, cargo commodities and uh quick discussion on rail car fire, their operator there. September seventeenth, uh everyone fuel C L C meeting in person, Point Pepper, Deschaux Park Road. Uh, September eighteenth, Town of Port Hoxbury E D P C meeting, I attended that virtually from Sydney. Uh, discuss Derek and unsightly premises. Uh, and there's action from that meeting that evening. Uh, September twenty-third, thirteen hundred Grove at Hoxbury in person meeting with the Potlatch. Uh, September twenty-third, fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred, attended the virtual Strait of Cancelle offer Wind Task Force. The uh, September twenty-third, fifteen hundred, seventeen hundred uh site tours of Port Hoxbury with the representatives from Potlatch Tech. We visited three sites, including the joint industrial park, and give the staff rope and unlocking the gate. Uh, September twenty-fifth, uh ten o'clock in the morning, meeting with the representatives from Akola. I was there as part of Grove at Hoxbury. Uh, and it goes on for the just time of this passing, my uh.
Well, that's great. Thank you so much, Deputy.
You'll be in the minutes of public.
That's fantastic. Uh, Councilor McCord?
Thank you, your worship. Um, October first, attended the Community Development Committee Meeting. October second, Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health. October fifteenth, fourteen, uh my first meeting with the Inverness County Home Support Agency. And the sixteenth of October, Eastern County Regional Library Board Meeting.
Thank you so much. Um, I have also, um, similar to Deputy Mayor Langley, I I have a written report that I've uh supplied a physical copy for everyone. I just wanted to just flag a few items. Um, so I did uh include just a a brief summary of the Nova Scotia Wind uh Research and Development Forum that I attended, so uh if anybody has any questions, feel free to to reach out. I'm happy to to do that. Um, the one thing I did wanna flag though, we did have a really, uh Gordy and I uh had a wonderful idea committee meeting uh last night. So just wanted to flag for the benefit of council that um it is the plan uh going forward for our idea committee members um to to move forward with part of our idea plan, which was uh to inform uh community uh members of what the details of our idea plan are. Uh, we're hoping to be able to do uh two one-hour sessions on November twenty-sixth, so we'll do a three to four o'clock um session in the late afternoon. We'll do another maybe six to seven uh P M uh evening session. Uh, and to do so in a way that, you know, hopefully it'll be as inclusive as possible for folks to come. Uh, we'll have a brief present presentation of the idea plan, some work that we that we provided to council. Uh, and then we'll have some roundtable discussions so that we can get some feedback from the community in terms of, you know, how do we achieve these goals that we set for ourselves within the idea plan? So I just wanted to let uh council know as that uh idea continues to evolve and Gordy's gonna take us on a little uh tour on uh November third. Um, all of our idea committee members just to go uh around and physically see the accessibility um improvements that we've made over the last uh couple of years, and our community members are really excited about that. So thank you very much, council, and uh Melissa does have a copy of the report that she can uh include through the minutes. And I will move on to C A O reports. Terry?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Um, I'd like to call upon Gordy.
Back up.
Thank you, my friend. I'd personally, I'd read your version, uh, report on what's been going on the last, the last event last month. First of all, I'd just like to acknowledge some uh successful uh Celtic colors, another one event, uh oh, excuse me, we host this event every year and it's a it's master for the community, but it's also master for our, uh, excuse me, our facility. It's a big event from our staff at all levels. Great from uh our main staff and our our management staff, everybody puts in, excuse me, puts in a hundred percent and uh this year is no, no, uh, no less than either. We had a great event, uh, lots of positive feedback and uh just wanted to thank everybody for their commitment to having that event go on again uh without a whole lot of hiccups. A lot to it. People don't realize what it takes to turn the facility over uh in a short time. And uh to have it, uh, have that type of an event here and then have it back to what we normally do daily uh overnight somewhat. Commend our staff for that. The parks, PL side auction on the pool side, uh both pools are, we were up and running since September. Uh, pretty much running as as normal. Not a lot of hiccups there, there, there are systems that uh councils have have been trying not to commit to our improvements over the last number of months and last couple of years with our our filtration and our, and most recently our skimmers and return jets and stuff like that, so it's really worth working well over there. Uh, the Dammelly Field Project, uh getting closer to having that complete, believe it or not, we're getting there. Uh, we made it to have the infield, uh final work in the infield done uh so that the usual groups could finish out their summer schedules, so that's that's being done now. Uh, the grading of the infield is complete. Most of the ditching and everything is complete there for drainage. Uh, alleviating the problems for the homeowners uh that that are adjacent to the ball field or anything that may have been happening there, so that's been taken care of. Um final paving and fencing is pretty much what's left and some improvements to the clubhouse, but I hope to get that done before the the weather gets too uh, too crazy over the next couple of months, we can get that done and uh and put that project put that project to bed. Uh, Community Food Bank, um we continue to support the food bank in any way we can. Uh, we are still still uh looking at landscaping options. And final elevations and stuff for for the food bank for, we've had a couple of, uh, we've had some input from consultants, um. I think we we need to tweak them some more. We just feel it's just not right for for that spot, so we are meeting again tomorrow and uh and picking up that ball and trying to finish that project also, so. That's the food bank. Uh, the airport, there's some, the ongoing issues with some asphalt uh issues there, and that's in progress. We've also acquired Strom Engineering to uh to look at some failing and aging electrical infrastructure for the airfield lighting. Um, some of it is original, excuse me, through the airport and uh it's failing more more often and we're going to repair it more often, so we're just gonna see what we have and and what we can do to make that a little bit more consistent and reliable. Uh, as you mentioned, we met with our idea committee yesterday and uh just to add on, uh, what your worship stated for uh for a tour, if any council wants to uh, excuse me, come along for a tour, just let me know and we'll I'll just make sure we have accommodations. We all go and the book sat bus or something, we'll go together and and see the improvements to where we are with their with their idea accessible improvements. And there's been many in the last couple of years, so we're we should be proud of those. We've done some recent upgrades to the Senate path, getting cleaned up for the service next one. Uh, we have a renewed partnership with the with a group from the Legion that have that have taken a renewed interest in that site and have helped us and guided us along. And I'd like to thank them for their for their input. It makes their, it makes what we do at the Senate path a lot more easier. We know, you know, it's easier for us to do that work. Um, we know we're doing what's right for for that site, so. And I just had an amendment, I added on, uh, I forgot to include on my report on Friday, it's just a little few notes on the waterfront. We had some boats on our property that uh that were there that uh we wanted to move on, so one of them has has been removed. Uh, one of them is a, is a local gentleman that's working hard to get his his sailboat back to his residence here in town uh for repair, for for permits stories, so uh confident that's gonna happen and uh the other one we're working towards uh having that removed too. I think we're gonna have some some progress there also, so there is some stuff happening with those those two vessels that are left there. And uh with the yacht club, I'm sorry the guys left, but I think they were aware of it. We we had phones going for siding and roofing repairs on that facility. And we got back and we rewarded the the roofing and the siding to to A one gutter, who were who were low bidders on that work. And again, we hope to have that done before the winter weather sets in and and I think the yacht club would be hap, will be happy with that investment from the town also, so. Uh, that's my report. I think that answered your question.
Gordy, any any questions or comments for Gordy at this time?
Just one comment. I I know that the drainage issue was a a big concern for some, and I'm sure they're happy to see that uh resolved. That's fantastic.
Yeah, I think from what I've heard, they're quite pleased with what I hear there, so.
This is up to Terry to let you ask the questions, Terry, if you need to.
Oh, absolutely, yes. I think um, I think Michelle's next and.
Okay.
Um.
Thanks, Gordy.
Will, thank you, Gordy. Uh, we'll leave these photos up because like most things that we do, uh, it's a joint effort from all staff uh getting together and so certainly from facility side and from the from the community cultural side uh as well with from Michelle's department, so we'll hear from Michelle from from uh from her department.
Terry, yeah, sure, your version. I'll deliver my brief reports uh tonight, but uh just because it's brief doesn't mean that we haven't done an awful lot in the last, uh, in the last month. Um, and just to echo what you said, Terry, you will find uh some of the same. Um, and just to echo what you said, Terry, you will find uh, some of the same things in my report and Gordy's report because particularly our two departments do overlap uh, quite a lot. Um, as you mentioned, we hosted a very successful opening night of Calvin Colors. There was hustle and bustle around the civic center the whole week. Um, and I just wanted to, you know, send a special thanks to um, all of the departments that, that helped this uh, event uh, success. And also all the local volunteers um, that came over and brought me here to help the whole day go perfectly as planned. And uh, it's just such a fun event to work and it's kind of a, a welcome tradition in the office. So you don't want to miss that, never want to miss that. And just to quickly mention Oktoberfest as well, uh, just this past weekend. You know, assisted the chamber as the host venue for Oktoberfest. And I think they had a very successful event once again this year. And again, thank you to the facilities team for um, setting up a beautiful venue to, to our, to the community and local business. Uh, just on the recreation side of things, um, you know, Corinne never gets enough credit for the incredible amount of work that she does. And you see that every single time, um, the recreation offerings flyer comes out every season. Um, so a huge thank you to Corinne. She spends enough a lot of time curating our program offerings. Um, registration for our fall programs is uh, pretty well complete with most of the programs already underway. Um, fitness classes, we're offering babysitting course, the usual yoga dance classes, the commute nights and some sport jogging programs. Um, the pool opened for the season, uh, just a couple of weeks ago. It feels like we've been, um, you know, gone forever already. Um, and the pool also hosted the life saving instructor course with nine um, people in attendance for the course. So that's always a good thing because um, you know, we're trying to continuously train people to keep um, to keep our level of staff um, off at the pool and so that we're able to maintain the programs that we do there. Um, and we do have a national lifeguard course uh, scheduled for November as well. Um, as usual, um, swimming lessons are full. Uh, so it really does, I say it every time, but it's, it really does speak to the, in the community. And um, a lot of people don't realize the incredible amount of work that goes into um, working on the waitlist for swimming lessons. So we do encourage folks to join the waitlist when, uh, when they don't get into swimming lessons right away, uh, when they try to register online. So what happens after that is that initiates a lot of work from staff at the pool. Uh, so they go through every single waitlist. Um, they make concessions, they add uh, uh, instructor um, assistance. Um, they expand class sizes. Um, and they do absolutely everything they can so that nobody is left waiting for, to get into swimming lessons. So, you know, massive thanks and kudos to all the staff that work at the pool. Um. It is a collective effort and um, it's no small feat uh, to try and meet those needs in the community. So special thanks to all of them. Um, and I want to say it, Christmas is coming.
Stop it.
Planning, planning is already underway uh, for our Christmas and New Year's events. Um, as usual, the Christmas parade will happen on the first Sunday of December. So this year that's December seventh. So permit applications uh, and planning safety preparations are already in progress. Um, and then the fifth annual sensory Santa event will take place the day before. The parade as usual on the Saturday, uh, December sixth. So save those dates in your calendar. Um, the Paroxbury Sports Hall of Fame twenty twenty five inductees have been publicly announced. Uh, the inductees include Hughie McDougall, Mercy McNeil and Trish Little. Very happy and excited to um, have the induction ceremony on November twenty second. I've just added it to all of your calendars a little earlier this evening. The uh, youth excellence uh, athlete awards will go to Ella Bartlett and Chad Richards. Uh, and the sports hall thing committee will also give a special recognition to uh, Bill Dunphy at the um, induction ceremony for his contribution to coverage of local sports over the last number, number of years. Um, so looking forward to that event. I do see a typo in my report. It's November twenty second, uh, at two o'clock from the better headline. And just some upcoming shows and events, we have Maria May coming on November first, so just in a couple of weeks. Uh, and I just heard from her yesterday, she uh, is surprised is bringing Brett Matthews with her. So that's going to be a really uh, fantastic show. Um, November twenty third, the men of the ever popular uh, Christmas show. And so that one is actually almost sold out, um, as is, as are uh, two uh, Christmas and Cape Breton shows uh, nearly sold out. So the evening show is sold out. That's the first one we, uh, we announced. And the matinee show on the same day is also on the sold out already. So that's usually, that's the usual. People love to see Ben Maynard coming into things. Some people make their Christmas, their kickoff to the Christmas seasons. Um, and again, uh, the parade, uh, December seventh, the sensory Santa event on December sixth. And of, of course, our first night celebrations. Uh, and then we just announced actually this afternoon, uh, March seventh, we have Jamie Rankin coming to do a soccer circle on March seventh uh, with J D Cormier and Catherine McLaughlin. So that'll be a great show as well. And just a quick note on our age followers, uh, grew about fifty more in the last month from six thousand three hundred thirty six to six thousand three hundred in the, the last month or so. Have a smile. Thank you. Time to take questions.
You.
Yeah, Michelle.
We'll call upon Sajin next to uh, to present the uh, engineering and public works report.
Hey, Mayor, I'm on there. Uh, completely believe the presentation, uh, is in progress projects, slightly ongoing, especially the public works building. The public works building project has now advanced to the fire and handout stage. All major construction activities are complete and the consultant has conducted the firework efficiency review. The consolidated list is being prepared for review and sign off soon. We have circulated an capacity crossroad checklist to guide the remaining documentation and coordination is underway with the building inspector to complete occupancy review. Quotations for the asphalt paving around the facility are currently being reviewed and work will proceed based on pricing and weather condition. Uh, the water system of police project. Uh, as you all know, uh, the pitched water tank gave leak was identified at the tank base during the initial field. Uh, crews from greater area on site beginning of October fifteen to carry out the resealing work, which was completed on last Saturday. The sealant now is undergoing its required curing period before refilling and testing can be proceeded. Once the curing bit is complete, uh, which is expected by the end of this week, uh, the tank will be refilled and tested again. Fencing installation is scheduled for the coming Monday and once the final confirmation is completed, we plan to provide uh, enhanced storage capacity, operating flexibility and long-term reliability for the town's new water system. The fire bridge drive sidewalk installation. The new sidewalk on fire bridge drive re-substantiate completion on October ninth. An issue with crossload grading was identified during the inspection phase, but was promptly corrected by the Food Department Dexter Construction. A final deficiency review by W S P was held on October fifteenth. And Dexter will complete minor grading and higher sealing by next week, uh, with a permitting. Going on to Grandville Street, this bridge for based on W S P inspection reports, both the Grandville Street particular farm to have significant structural deterioration for safety reasons. They were close to hydro traffic on October ninth with pedestrian access maintained. Our staff are working with W S P to advance the repair design and tender documentation for rehabilitation. A detailed traffic and signage plan has been developed in coordination with the North Scotia Department Works and Spelitaria Safety Services to ensure safe detail procedures. The project will remain in effect until detailed design and tendering are completed. And the department initiatives, um, veterans memorial brothel. The veteran memorial brothel located near the general and conveniability must be written on October fourteenth. It features automated red and white bars with the lastly forget inscription. A lasting tribute to local veterans. Memorial designs are in production and will be installed as soon as they are ready. And uh, an update on fleet update. A new F three fifty public works vehicle was delivered on October fifteenth from cancel proceeds, replacing our two thousand fifteen model. The new truck will be used for general operation, calling and winter control, ensuring reliability heading into our upcoming season. And in general, on public work operation, our crew has remained busy towards the reporting lead from September eleven until October seventeen. They did afford patching and payment updates, seasonal oil operations, water system checks, fire code testing, supporting abroad utility locates, storms, sea vermin incidents, signage and payment marking adjustments, seasonal feed maintenance, service of procurement uh, for winter readiness. And that concludes my.
Thank you. Any questions, Kristen, Jeff?
Um, I was just curious about the water tank. Was it the, the leakage? Was it in a seam?
Uh, no, I think at the base.
At the base?
Yeah. So since it was the base, we couldn't identify the exact location. So the procedure is to repair the whole base.
Okay. And uh, just in, in terms of going up pine ridge, just today as a visual just recognizing the pylons and everything, Sajin, are they going to be picked up and removed soon?
I already follow with the contact date because that doesn't belong to the contact to us to the safety first.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, they have to come back and pick it up.
And uh, I just want to, just appreciate the added uh, safety measure with the three-way stop on uh, McLaughlin Drive. Prince and Grandville. I appreciate that. I went down and checked that the other day. It was a nice addition to that safety measure there.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Sajin.
And last but not least, uh, O'Brien is going to give the director of finance.
It's an overstatement. So just a quick update on the audit process. Uh, final statements were sent to the auditor uh, for their last review. I'm just waiting to hear back on the tentative time of wanting to put all the audit committee together and have those reviewed for a presentation to council. Uh, for the water utility, uh, third quarter bills will go out at the end of this month. Uh, Canada Post is back to regular operations uh, with rotating strikes. Uh, but we don't think that this should affect any of the mailing of the invoices. Uh, and we did see a small uptick in residents uh, signing up for e-billing uh, to help alleviate some of those issues that we've been seeing. Uh, under the tax billings, uh, taxes were due at the start of the month. Uh, at the end of this month, we'll be sending out uh, preliminary tax sale notices for any properties that uh, were three years and over years. Um, recently there was some, just reminder notices sent out to residents. So if you consider generally that, that's just a regular mail out for just remind people that, uh, that they should pay their taxes. Uh, Superport Marine, uh, we're continuing to work on a long-term agreement with this. Uh, it's with legal right now. Uh, they're assisting working through some of the more complex uh, portions of this as far as uh, assets on site. Landry Lake, um, again, this just continues to move forward. Uh, so staff is continuing to talk with the developers, provincial governments, uh, and legal advisors uh, in addition to their kind of enrichment. Professional developments, uh, two staff, uh, attended conferences this month, myself. I went to the AMANES Fall Conference and Tiffany, you went to the Noes Association of Tax Collectors Conference. Uh, as a note, I've been appointed to the AMANES Board as the regional representative. Uh, there was a little typo in my report. Apparently it's not for Cape Breton. It's only for, for Hawksbury, Richmond, Inverness and Victoria. Uh, under I T, uh, Diamond Minister's software that we use for all of our accounting and tax and utility has been fully uh, transitioned to a new cloud environment. Uh, so now we're with just one uh, service provider. Uh, I will note though that that diamond software uh, has projected end of life for the end of twenty twenty nine. Uh, so be coordinating with uh, neighboring municipal partners uh, in a joint procurement exercise to evaluate a replacement software package. Uh, so that'll become part of budget deliberations in the coming years as there will be a uh, financial impact of that change. That's the end of my least report.
Thanks, Brian. Any questions, O'Brien? Thank you for your fact, Terry.
Uh, maybe I'll just add one other thing. Um, we have been doing significant amount of work on planning. So we've been working with upland plannings on, on development of uh, concept uh, plans for the spruce and um, uh, Tamrac Drive extension uh, area. And uh, that, that work is, you've seen uh, a partial report on that. And that final report is coming very shortly. We're supposed to finalize that next week. The other item on that is we're investigating opportunities for um, for the backyard suite uh, program. The backyard suite program is a provincial initiative um, that has been designed to advance uh, um, a building for, to uh, lead, help alleviate uh, housing needs. Uh, we're not able to take advantage of that because we do not have the zoning in place to be able to do that. So we're working with uh, with planning to be able to look at that, look at the, look at areas in town to be able to advance that and for people to uh, to be able to take advantage of.
Thank you.
That's our reports.
Thank you, Terry. Um, and just if I may, I just wanted to uh, share a spe, a special thank you to, to staff, particularly Melissa Warner, who did a lot of heavy lifting for the Austin Ledger Memorial unveiling uh, this past Saturday. Uh, so I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment to, to thank her and she got uh, very high commendations from the, the law family. And I regard indeed so, and, and also thank you to, to Gordy and Terry and and the public work staff who will, who also helped with the case and, and to pull that project together. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so uh, under other business, we have straight area soccer club turf field request. Reading councillor. Um, so you all see the outline in your uh, package and I'll just read a little. Um, Straight Area Soccer Club has been serving our town and the surrounding area for decades. It provides opportunity for youth to have physical activity lifestyles in a team environment while developing the skills needed to compete in this sport. The community development has heard from Drew McCory, Vice President of the Straight Area Soccer and a member of the committee on a project to construct a turf field in town. Drew has prepared a letter to council, as you'll see in your report, requesting support that was included in our packages. But you see, the committee fully supports this project and recognizes the next step to move forward is to have a feasibility completed. The committee asked council to support the project to look for opportunities to fund feasibility studies, working with the club. We ask for the request we, to be brought forward the next council session consideration. And I have a consideration for uh, joint, at our next uh, joint public meeting that the town of Port Oxbury support the area soccer club turf field project and look for opportunities to fund feasibility study, working in partnership with Straight Area Soccer. And if you, if you can't, I'll hold it up so you can, because Terry put a big writing for me.
Thank you for that presuming, Tom. Appreciate that. I got a kick out of that.
Yeah, not only reading it, but also displaying. Um, is council okay with that moving forward for consideration? Okay, no, no, no official opposition for that. So we will move next. Thank you, Paula, for your presentation. We'll move next to the Billy Joe McLean U thirteen triple A hockey tournament and Terry's going to give us an overview of that.
Uh, yes, Mayor. We have a request from uh, the head coach of the under thirteen triple A Cape Breton West under thirteen triple A hockey uh, club. They're hosting a tournament and it's going to be in honor of Billy Joe McLean. So it's a Billy Joe McLean Memorial Under 13 AAA Hockey Tournament. It'll be held on January 16th to 18th at the Port Hoxbury Civic Center. And the host will be the Cape Breton West Under 13 Islanders. The tournament on, the tournament is proudly named in honor of the honorable Billy Joe McLean, a dedicated community leader, lifelong supporter of hockey in Cape Breton. Born and raised in Port Hoxbury, Mr. Plain served as a member of the Legislative Assembly, Provincial Cabinet and is mayor of Port Hoxbury. Throughout his career, he has worked tirelessly to advance opportunities for the people of his hometown and surrounding communities. Known for his energy and determination and passion for youth and sport, his legacy continues to inspire future generations. It's only fitting that the Billy Joe McLean Memorial Under 13 AAA Tournament is being held at the Hoxbury Civic Center building, which he was instrumental in making a reality. The tournament will feature six Under 13 AAA hockey teams from across Nova Scotia. So the, the request from from the, from the team is for, given that it's a memorial to a former mayor, that, that we become the we're being offered the, to become the presenting sponsor at a cost of $1,000 to sponsor the tournament.
So, so this, so timing wise, we would have time in the first floor to leave the next public meeting for consideration?
Yes.
Okay. Is council hoping to have that be moved forward to our next public meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. And we do have one addition. Terry, if you don't mind, just, and this is something that we do every year. It's on behalf of Port Hoxbury Literacy and it's their annual event. Do you want to give a quick overview?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So this is an annual event and, and the town, the the Port Hoxbury Leadership Council is really a norm of the town. So we do, we, we perform administration for, for that. We work very closely with them. And we, we've helped host the, their, their one big fundraiser of the year, which is the Faze event. And it's held at the Civic Center. And it's being held on November 7, which is going to be before our next council meeting. But we, what we'd like is for, to get consensus to support this event as we had in the past and to ratify that support at the public meeting later in November.
What is the wishes of council? Are we?
I would certainly support that. And I think in the past, I don't know traditionally, but I think at least last year we purchased eight tickets. Is that what we did?
To you, your worship. The, there's, our, our contributions are really threefold. So it's donation off the space. It's the, it's the, the purchase of, of a table at the event. And some, some items for the auction that will be supplied through, through recreation.
So Deputy Mayor, you're okay with moving that forward for ratification?
Without hesitation, your Lord's sake.
Absolutely. Okay. So we do have the consensus of council. We can ratify that.
Thank you.
Close to end. And under Agenda Item 8 is General Public Community of the Hall and our public meeting for November 18. And I would ask for a motion of adjournment.
We agree.
Thank you. So we have a second minute. All those in favor, please say goodbye by saying yes.
Yeah, yes.
When we opposed, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for